Thirty seconds.
Over to you. Okay, good evening. Welcome to this, the second meeting of December of the Torrington City Council. It's also the last meeting of 2022. We call the meeting to order and the first order of business is the pledge. Councilman Steinbach, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselwoman. Sorry.
Okay, what?
Okay, first thing we'll do is the information items for Tuesday, December 20th. Good evening. Just in case you haven't noticed, winter weather is upon us. We've had our first major winter storm or blizzard and the community continues to recover from those effects. City and county had partial and full closures and our Goshen County School District students switched to virtual school days through Thursday. As of tomorrow, December 31st, 21st, excuse me, winter be officially here. As we move forward into the three months or more of snowy conditions, we'd encourage you to be careful navigating the often slick city streets. Let's be sure to keep ourselves and families safe while navigating the streets of Torrington. As of today, December 20th, there are 14 new positive COVID cases that can officially be reported, and that's down from a high of 24 two weeks ago. The community risk faster, still high. Unfortunately, Public Health is reporting three additional COVID-related deaths, bringing the COVID death total in Goshen County to 62. Torrington Community Hospital has been at or near capacity this past week, as well with a mixture of COVID, influenza, and RSV patients. Be careful, take necessary precautions, take care of yourselves and your family, as the flu and likely COVID will be with us until spring. Please call Public Health for an appointment at the next available clinic. We continue to ask everyone to be aware of our children, parents, buses, and activity that is taking place in and around our schools. We have a lot of snow on the streets. There's black ice underneath, the streets are slick, slowing down makes very good sense. Slow down, put your phone down, refrain from talking and texting while you're driving in our community. The city with the support of the Rotary Club and the Goshen County Rec Board is continuing with their efforts to add additional crosswalks along the city walking path. Please slow down in those areas as that work is being completed. Remember to take your separated paper products, cardboard, and your aluminum and steel cans to Elk EcoCycle. They remain open Monday through Wednesday from 8 to 4 for your convenience. On Pearl Harbor Day, December 7th, that's last week, December Kelly, December Kelly. Councilman Kelly Patterson, Kenny and I attended the VFW naming ceremony where they renamed their post to the Paul A. Johnson Earl Bandermore Post Number 2918. I want to compliment Ed Holly, our Streets and Sanitation Supervisor, and his staff for our efforts clearing the streets during and after the big snowstorm. Also, the staff members from other departments who cleared the sidewalks and the parking lots. They did great work. It was done by dedicated people putting in long hours at a time when most of us were asleep. Let's all make sure that they know that the people of Torrington appreciate their efforts and their sacrifice to continually keep our city safe. This is my last city council meeting as mayor. I've sat as councilman or as mayor for over 500 city council meetings covering the past 23 years. It has been a great honor to serve the citizens of this community. My goal was always to be as open and transparent as possible and to do whatever it takes to improve the community. I have nothing but respect for the city of Torrington staff. What they do and how they do it with often little appreciation is remarkable. I now look forward to a new role of sitting on the sidelines and watching the progress the new mayor and new council make to improve the city. On January 3rd, Herb Dobie will take on over as mayor. Wayne Deal and Shane Victory will be sworn into their new council seats, and they will join Councilman Rick Patterson and Councilman Dennis Kelly to round out the new council. I wish them all well. Thank you. Okay. Next is to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the 12:06 2022 council meeting as published.
Move to accept the consent agenda as published.
Councilman Kelly, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved the consent agenda. Next is to approve the agenda, and there are two amendments that I want you to add. First of all, is a bid opening sewer line improvements, and please put that at the bottom of the page, 4A. Sewer line improvements. Item 4A. The second amendment is to eliminate item 7. That item has been withdrawn from the agenda and will take more discussion before it comes back. I think that's all the changes or adjustments to the agenda.
I'd move to approve the agenda with the amendments.
Counselwoman Steinbach, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, move to the action items. First action item is ordinance on third reading, Attorney Eddington.
An ordinance amending and reenacting section 18.16.020 of the Torrington Municipal Code, 2022 revisions relating to the city of Torrington, Wyoming, amending the zoning district map by establishing C1 zoning for attractive land.
Thank you. This is related to the Wagner's Flower Shop property. For years, it has been operating as a commercial business on residential property, and the intent of this ordinance is to convert that to commercial property. Mr. Essis, any comments?
That is correct, Mayor. We're going to get it legally zoned so the new owners can do as they please there.
Have had any complaints, comments?
No, sir. No public input.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns? Okay, let's go for a motion.
I would move to approve this ordinance on third and final reading.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the motion approving ordinance on third reading, converting the property to commercial. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved the ordinance on third reading. Item number two, ordinance on third reading, Attorney Eddington.
An ordinance amending and reenacting section 3.04.050 of the Torrington Municipal Code, 2022 revisions relating to sanitation fees.
Thank you. Mr. Harkins, Director of Public Works, and Mr. Holly, Streets and Sanitation Superintendent, you want to take it? Jeff?
Sure. We've had no comments. I've heard nothing negative in regards to the changes in the ordinance. Basically, it just simplifies the tipping fees at the baler and the landfill. It adds a few things that weren't previously in the ordinance.
Pretty smooth.
Pretty smooth.
Okay. Ed, you have anything you want to add?
I'm good with it.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Hearing none, let's go for motion.
I'd move to approve on third reading.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselwoman Steinbach, thank you. Have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance on third reading relating to sanitation fees. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number three is to award the bid new Itron electric meters. Staff recommends awarding the bid to Hotline Electric Sales and Service of Parker, Colorado in the amount of $69,247.82. Our meter foreman, Jason Wilhelm, is here tonight if we have any questions. Counsel, do you have any questions for this young man? Jason, why don't you come up on anyway? We can basically tell us what's happening here and why.
So unlike in previous years past, we've usually split it up into separate orders. That way, we don't have to bid it out, and we just didn't think about it this year. So that's the reason why our meters are coming to bid.
It's about the same thing we do yearly, it's just together.
Same thing as always. We just put it in one lump sum in the cash flow, and I myself didn't think that, you know, what is it, that after $35,000 it has to go to bid, so.
Oh, I see.
So, do I have a question?
Yeah.
So what you're doing here, this is just done annually, it's part of rotating meters, right, because they wear out?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So did this turn out to be a better deal than ordering them the other way?
You know, I don't know that... But when we first quoted the meters, you know, not knowing that we had to send this out for bid, and then when we got the quote out for bid, it was pretty much a wash, pretty much the same price, so.
And what do we do with the old meters?
A lot of them, if they're still decent enough and they test accurate, we put them back out in the system. If they're old enough and they don't test accurate, we try to pull them apart and scrap what little bit of metal we can out of them, and then other than that, they get trashed. Unfortunately, we don't want... The certain types of plastic that are in those meters, we can't send over to our local recycler here, and to recycle that much plastic, we'd have to have a facility to store that in, and we just don't have that room.
And how come you annually replace so many meters a year?
It's per ordinance. We have to... Per ordinance, we have to test so many, but it's quicker for us just to go replace them and then take them down to our shop and test them, rather than take our meter testing equipment, pull the meter, put that in, put the meter back in, test it, and then same thing back. Pull the meter tester, slap the meter back in. It's just a quicker process for us.
Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, staff, what do you think?
I would move to approve this bid.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. Motion and a second to the award the bid bid of $69,247 to Hotline Electric Sales and Parker, Colorado. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved the bid. Item number four, award the bid for two new three-quarter ton crew cab pickups. Stack recommends awarding the bid to Laramie Peak Motors of Wheatland, Wyoming in the amount of $101,228. Our staff references are Lynette Stricker, our clerk treasurer, Jason Wilhelm, the meter foreman, and Ed Holly, Streets, excuse me, Streets and Sanitation Superintendent. So, Lynette, you want to start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We opened bids on December 15th at 2:00 PM. We received four good bids. TransWest Ford did not submit a bid guarantee, so that bid was disqualified. The next lowest bidder was Laramie Peak Motors, and the bid was for $50,614 each, for a total amount of $101,228. It is 365 days out, and they need to know the answer. By the 13th of January, they have to submit their orders to Ford. So, time is of the essence on this one.
365 days. Doesn't get any better. Ed, can you explain again what the deal with TransWest was, why that didn't work out?
So, as a requirement in the bid and the bidder instructions and per our state statute, we are required to have a bid bond or bid guarantee with our bids. And there wasn't anything submitted with the bid, and it specifically said it in several of the documents that were sent out in the bid packet. Also, it probably wasn't the low bid if you consider the 5% preference for out-of-state bidders, because they are now out-of-state.
Well, that's right. That's right. Okay, thank you. Appreciate the explanation. Jason, do you have anything you'd like to add? Or Ed? Nope. Counsel, do you have questions?
I have a lot of questions for Jason.
Okay, Jason, could you come up?
And Ed, tell you the truth.
Go on up. Councilman Kelly, go ahead.
The truck that you want to replace from the metering department only has 70,000 miles on it.
That's correct.
Why are we replacing it?
Because it's starting to show issues of wear and tear. It may only have 76,000 miles, but those are all in-town miles. If there was an hour meter on the truck, it would tell a whole different story. And, I mean, with the few issues we've been having, it's more beneficial to us to have a vehicle we know we can go out, start up in the morning, it's gonna start, and do our job, especially when me and my coworker, we're usually not in the same vehicle. We're going separate directions, and all we have is just the two vehicles. That, and that pickup also sits outside in all of the weather. We don't have a shop or anything to put it in, so having a reliable vehicle is important.
Well, I talked to Brian up at the city shop, and according to him, the vehicle's never been in there since he's taken over.
We haven't had any issues at the moment, no, but...
Well, if there's no issues, what kind of issues have you been having with it?
We've had transmission issues with it before, wanting to not go into gear, and it's one of those things like your personal vehicle, you take it up to the mechanic and it all of a sudden doesn't want to do it anymore. But, you know, I mean, it's showing some wear and tear. It's got some rust on the box. You know, it's got some messed up corners on the body panels, which I agree are easy enough to be fixed, but, I mean, it is, is it a 13-year-old pickup?
I had a pickup. I drove 25 years... I owned it for 14. It's 25 years old. Had 178,000 mile on it. It's taken anywhere. But it doesn't sound like this has any problems that are serious enough to be replaced. I mean, as far as, I mean, you said it runs around town, so if it does quit, you're not stranded for long right next to the...
No, but depending on the problem, then we're one person short on what work we can do as well. Like I said, we're very rarely together. We have enough work that both of us need to be separated. We have one of us every other week doing work orders and weather permitting, which hasn't been the greatest here this month, the other person's out swapping out meters, and we've got electric and water meters to change out. So it's important for us to both have a reliable vehicle.
How's your other vehicle doing, the little van thing?
Oh, it has its own quirks too, but it's fair and better than the pickup is.
Okay.
And with a lot less miles and newer, so.
Not as old?
Yeah. It's a 2013, if I remember correctly.
Now, it doesn't stay on this bid sheet with... Are these still a bid with utility boxes or are they just straight regular pickups?
Straight regular pickups. So when the... When TransWest had those, I don't know, what was it, five-some-odd pickups that someone backed out on the deal, you know, we started considering, do we really need that utility box? And, you know, we decided to give it a shot to see if we actually need it or not. We believe that we can get the stuff that we need to haul with us in a pickup with just a standard box. And when they sold those pickups, we decided just to keep going with it. So, hoping that we could get the pickup a little bit quicker than a pickup with the utility box being how far out?
Now, is this bid included as a trade-in?
The last I understood, Dennis was wanting to use the pickup for one of the departments he is over.
See what I mean? If it's good enough for somebody else, why isn't it good enough for you?
But depending on the department, it might not be a pickup that's used every single day.
Dennis, can you comment?
Mayor, I think it was agreed to during the budget session that if that pickup does get replaced, I would like to have it in the Parks Department. We're going to try to use it for sprinkler repairs, put all our parts for sprinklers in there, and we have one more vehicle for our parks. Some of those kids driving those carts is not the safest thing. My intention with some of that is to maybe start hauling our mowers to more remote locations like Pioneer Park, Grand Vista Park, where they're not driving the mowers on the street. Down the road, that's my intention. I don't know if we'll get there, but that's what I'd like to do. If it trades.
Ed, do you want to comment on yours?
Lane is replacing a 04, 200 and about 20,000 miles.
Is this your pickup?
No, it's the landfill.
Oh, okay.
They used it out. We take it from our shop to the landfill, haul fuel for the dozer and the compactor. It's getting pretty loose in places.
Now, the way I understand it, your pickup is going to the landfill and you get the new one?
Yes.
Now, I'd have heard about the one at the landfill. What kind of shape it's in?
It's drivable for a 20-year-old pickup.
It's also got, what, almost 180,000 mile on it?
Yeah, it's 200, about 220.
220?
Yeah.
Counselor McKelly, I can tell you from past experience of working on those vehicles, once they get to the landfill and are there any amount of time, you're not going to want them back on the street. They need...
I can understand the one at the landfill.
Yeah.
It plays in the sandbox all day long.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
The other one runs up and down the streets all day long. And here again, this one is no utility box or anything either, right?
No, don't need a utility box.
And no trade-in?
Unless they want to talk it when we get a pickup in 365 days.
If you get a pickup in 365, yeah.
Further questions? Thanks, boys. Appreciate it.
I have one, one question. Were these bid as a package deal or separately?
They was bid as a package.
So you do one or the other?
Well, I'm sure we could separate it.
They're exactly the same, so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Counsel?
I would move to approve awarding the bid to Laramie Peak Motors for the pickups.
Thank you, Kate. Oh, excuse me, Counselwoman Steinbach, is there a second?
Second then.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. A motion and a second to approve the purchase of two three-quarter ton crew cab pickups from Laramie Peak Motors in the amount of $101,228. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's go through a vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We approve 4 to 1. Thank you. All right, item five, resolution number 202214, Attorney Eddington.
Excuse me, Mayor?
4A.
Number 4A.
Sorry, 4A.
Sorry. I didn't want to put it there. I should be able to find it. Okay, item 4A, apologize for that. We have a bid opening sewer line improvements. We should have an additional document on the desk, counsel, and Mr. Harkins, would you take it?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. We recommend that council award the fiscal year 23 sewer lining replacements to Bivens Construction of Torrington, Wyoming in the amount of $246,733.50 and reserve $53,266.50, which is 17.8% for contingency for a project total of $300,000, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Basically, this is a sewer line replacement project in the alley between Main Street and West A from 15th Avenue down to 16th Avenue, I believe. And it's 550 lineal feet of eight-inch VCP clay pipe being replaced with new eight-inch PVC sanitary sewer pipe. There are removal and replacement of three manholes, removal of five manholes, and one new manhole construction connecting 19 active sewer services, and the removal and replacement of pavement, curb gutter, and sidewalk and incidentals associated with project items. Bid opening was held on November 16th, 2022 for the project. We had two bids that were in conformance with the bidding requirements. Bivens Construction was the low. JR Civil bid came in at 629144, significantly higher than Bivens. Contractor's been given the option of when to start the project and has been given 45 calendar days to complete the project. Project must be substantially complete on or before June 30th, 2023. Funds for this project were included in the fiscal year 23 budget under the sanitary sewer funds.
Good enough. $400,000 difference in the bids.
Almost.
Wow.
Pretty close.
I have a question too.
Go ahead.
So if I'm reading this chart right, it looks like it's about 2,500... The lower bid is about $2,500 less than the engineer estimate. uh, the lower bid is about twenty-five-hundred dollars less than the engineer estimate.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
So it came in under the engineer.
Yeah.
Which is amazing these days, but.
It's, it was a really good bid in this day and age, in this climate.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would move that we approve the bid to, um, Bivens before he changes his mind.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion to approve the bid, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Steinbach, thank you, a motion and a second to approve the bid for Bivens Construction in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. Further discussion?
Let's have one question.
Go ahead.
Why this particular five-hundred-and-fifty feet?
Uh, there was two sewer lines basically in that same area, same section, and both are deteriorated. Uh, the new replacement will just be a, a single sewer line going in that same stretch of alley.
And it's in the, one of the oldest sections of town, right?
One of the oldest sections of that area.
Anything else, Dennis?
Nope, it's all.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, move to a vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved the bid opening for the sewer line replacements. Okay, now we'll move to item five, resolution, Attorney Eddington.
Whereas the general fund received unanticipated revenue and whereas certain budgets had expenditures in excess of the budgeted amount, whereas Wyoming State statute prohibits any officer or employee of a municipality to make any expenditure or encumbrance in excess of total appropriation for any department, therefore be it resolved that fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget of the city of Torrington be amended by grand total budget adjustment of one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents.
Thank you. Clerk Treasurer Stricker?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. A lot of things have happened since passing the budget, um, in June. The council approved, um, the wage study adjustments and that, that accounts for the majority of the wage adjustments on this. Also, we received an ARPA grant, um, for our ambulance personnel for sixty-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-five dollars as, um, incentive stipends, um, for the work they, they did on the, um, pandemic. So that is included in there as well as we've received several grants that were not budgeted. So, um, we need to adjust the budget for those expenses and, um, and adjust the revenues as well. So if you have any questions on any of these adjustments, uh, I'd be glad to answer them.
This is a transparency issue that is required by the law and so us to make sure that people know why the additional money is coming into the budget.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, do you have any questions?
No, I would move to approve resolution number zero-two-two-dash-one-four as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kelly, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty-dash-twenty-two, the fiscal year budget amendment. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number six, policy handbook amendments. Clerk Treasurer Stricker?
Um, the Wage Committee was very busy, um, for the last six months and we have proposed the following changes to, um, the policies for the city of Torrington. We have changes to the sick bank. There seemed to be a little bit of confusion as to the definition of a catastrophic illness. So we defined that in the policy, um, as well as there seemed to be, um, some participants who, um, did not have a full eighty hours of sick bank leave to be able to join the sick bank. So the, the committee discussed reducing that to forty-hour requirement from an eighty-hour requirement. And it just kind of clarifies things and hoping, uh, we also clarified maternity leave and when it's eligible for sick bank leave. You can see those adjustments in, uh, yellow, um, in the attached documents.
You want us to do these one at a time or you want them to do as a package? Jim, what do you think?
You can do them as a package unless there are changes that needs to be pulled out separately.
Okay, all right. Counsel, do you have any questions about the first one?
Okay, the next one is bereavement policy. This policy, um, needed further clarification as well. It's a fairly new policy. It was put in place, um, a couple of years ago. Um, in the past, um, employees would use sick time for their bereavement. It, it seemed to be problematic when, um, a death would happen in the family and there wasn't enough sick time to grant them. So we separated out the bereavement leave, um, and made this policy. Um, we added clarification, um, of what leave time is, is eligible after bereavement leave and we eliminated consecutive, um, from the first bullet point. Basically, sometimes when you, um, have bereavement leave, you need a couple of days, um, for the funeral, but, but you also need, um, a day, you know, when your loved one dies or passes on. So, um, we just thought consecutive should be eliminated from that and that it, you could split up your leave if you needed to.
Any questions about regarding that policy, counsel? I don't hear any, so let's move on.
The next one is sick leave. The sick leave policy, um, was revised to include verbiage related to, um, sick leave upon separation of employment. There seemed to be some confusion. The city has never paid out sick leave, um, if you were to resign or be let go. Um, sick leave was not payable at the time of termination. The policy didn't specifically say that, so Chris and I felt like we needed to add that to, for further clarification. So, um, sick leave is not payable upon termination and we, we clarified that. And we also, um, unless you retire and have ten years of service, then there's some options you can choose for your retirement with your sick leave.
It can go to your health insurance or to, what's the other one?
Um, a payout of up to five thousand dollars based on how many hours you have at your hourly rate.
Um, I have a quick question on page two of the sick leave. This is illness or medical care appointment of an immediate family member? So what, what do you consider immediate? Is that just like your, what if you have aging parents and?
That's immediate.
That is immediate? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have, go ahead, just clarification. So this doesn't really change what we're doing, it just clarifies?
Yes, it doesn't change anything.
Thank you.
Um, I also added medical care appointments to number three. You can see that highlighted in yellow. It just said illness before and sometimes you have to take your child to the doctor or, you know, you, you're eligible to use sick leave for that.
Questions on sick leave? Go ahead.
Okay. The next one is the travel policy. This needed to be updated a little bit. It's been a while and some of the, the, you know, the allowance for meals, it really didn't go very far anymore. Um, so we changed it, um, to basically, um, reference the federal per diem rate for the, the area you're going to. Most of the area in Wyoming is one rate except for Jackson and Cody. So if we were having training in those areas, the per diem rate really wouldn't make it. So we, we decided to add just the federal per diem rate there. That way that can be decided before they leave how much their allotment is gonna be for the day for meals. And then we added clarification on, um, allowing each meal not to exceed fifty percent of the daily meal per diem. So, um, even though you have, let's say, a hundred dollars for the day, you can't spend that all in one meal, um, and have an extravagant meal on the city. Uh, it's not something we want. So, any questions on that one?
Just on, the federal rate varies.
Yes.
Right, by where, by location?
Yes, it does. We do have some travel out of state, um, so it's nice, we can look at that at the area and know exactly what the rate should be. And it, it vary, and the, the federal government updates that whenever it needs to be changed, so.
Any further questions, counsel? Okay, let's go on to clothing, uniform, fringe benefit.
Again, we're just clarifying some, um, of the verbiage in here. It seemed to be a little confusing as to what qualified as clothing and uniform. Basically, um, we clarified that and we added a definition for suitable for everyday wear. This is basically a result of the, the IRS, um, and the audit we had several years ago on our fringe benefits. If we are buying clothing for a, a department, we need to, it, it's either taxable or not taxable under the fringe benefit. If it's taxable, that means the employee will be charged that amount of clothing and as revenue or as income. And then, um, it would be taxed and the IRS wants their money, so. I just don't want to get audited again and, and this not being followed the way it should be.
So we, clothes that typically could be worn, worn either at work or for their personal choice.
Right.
That's probably gonna be taxed.
Yes.
And so reflective uniforms, reflective pants, those kinds of things.
You know, glasses, um, steel-toed boots, those are all purchased for the employees. And of course, um, this does not apply to law enforcement or EMS. They, they have uniforms and they have to wear them and the.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Clerk Treasurer Stricker on that?
I was gonna say something about wearing his uniform to a Village People concert, but I, you know, just. So I won't say that.
Okay. Last one, Clerk Treasurer Stricker?
So the last one is, um, we made some additions or changes to the extended duty assignment policy for the police department. Basically, um, we added task force officer in as an extended duty assignment and we clarified the SRO contract, um, to update the contract we currently signed with the Goshen County School District. So if you need further clarification on that, Matt is here to, to answer those questions.
Matt, could you speak to the second SRO position? I don't think everybody's aware of all that.
Are you talking about the most recent agreement with the school district?
Yeah.
So we, we have two SROs currently that work in Torrington at Goshen County School District. The first, we negotiated a fifty percent salary reimbursement and the second, we negotiated a twenty-five percent salary reimbursement. Those are the reason for the change or part of the reason for the change in the extended duty assignment because part of that, that contract allows the school district input on the selection and evaluation of those employees. And we didn't have that outlined, um, in the extended duty, duty, um, assignment policy because that contract wasn't in place, um, when that policy was drafted. Uh, more recently, we've worked with Goshen County School District and the Goshen County Sheriff's Office, um, to provide contract services, um, out in the county for Southeast and LaGrange. Um, and that program is hopefully gonna be starting here in the next few weeks or probably at the close of Christmas break, um, where we'll have, uh, the ability to support where some staffing isn't available in other places and then the school district will reimburse us for those expenses.
Great. This is a good, uh, good arrangement between the school district and the city of Torrington. Appreciate it. Worked out good. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for Matt or for Clerk Treasurer Stricker?
I have a question about the task force officer. Uh, I know that position is assigned to DCI and works incredible hours a lot of time. Do they, are they on a salary or are they paid hourly or how in the world do you do that?
They maintain, um, the same hourly pay that we do for all of our, um, law enforcement staff. They, there, there are some differences from the standpoint that, um, there's a grant that's triggered for any DCI-related overtime. Um, so when they are, um, eligible for overtime pay, that actually comes out of a DCI grant, so we don't have to pay for that. Um, and we also receive, I believe it's forty thousand dollars a year, Lynette, is that right?
Yes.
About forty thousand dollars a year in salary offset. That had previously been a supervisory position for no purpose. Um, and so bringing that back to a rotating law enforcement position is, um, a, a good fit.
Yeah, I, I just wondered, I, I know when they have that assignment, there are times they work day and night and they're following people around and doing things and.
It's a job.
Yeah.
It's a big job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, um, any further questions on extended duty assignments? All right, um, I think we covered all of them and I didn't think there were any questions that were unanswered, so we'd like a motion toward all six of those adjusted policy handbook amendments.
I would move to approve the policy handbook amendments as presented.
Councilman Kenny, thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Steinbach, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve the hall policy handbook amendments. Is there further discussion? Councilman Kenny, before he starts, by the way, this is the chairman of the Wage Committee and, uh, he's put in an awful lot of work on that and we appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Put it in there, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I do want to thank Mrs. Stricker, Mr. Harkins, Chief Johnson and Mrs. Nickel for their efforts to the, uh, Wage Committee. It has been, uh, what I considered a very fun, very active committee and, uh, I appreciate the hard work that all of you and the dedication that all of you have shown. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on table, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved the policy handbook amendments. We deleted item number seven, so let's go to number eight, approval of the bills from December seventh, twenty-twenty-two through December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. Clerk Treasurer Stricker?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. So attached to your agenda were a list of bills. Also sent it, handed out a second set tonight for, for your approval. I'd be glad to answer questions on either set.
Um, I just have a question about the, on the, the new set of bills, page three, towing of the ambulance.
I wondered about that.
Okay.
Obviously, it was outside of town.
Yes, they, they had a transfer to Casper. Um, they made it to Casper with a patient, thank goodness. On the way back, um, the wheel almost fell off, um, but he did catch it before it completely. So they needed a tow, um, and it's, they couldn't really tow it from the front, it was a back, back wheel. So they had to get a trailer and there was only one that was big enough in Casper, so it ended up costing quite a bit of money, but it was three in the morning, so didn't have much choice.
One of those things where you don't have a lot of choice.
No.
But they did get the ambulance fixed.
They did, today.
Is it back in town now?
I think it was supposed to be back in service, Dennis.
Oh, it had been, okay. It's back in service today. It was back in service, they had to order some wheel studs and it took about a week to get them, so. The wheel studs actually broke off.
So what do we do when we, when the ambulance is out of service like that? Do we have a backup ambulance?
We have one backup ambulance, yes. And hopefully we don't need a third one. But if we do, there's always, um, we can get assistance, um, from the other volunteer departments or from Scotts Bluff.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions on the bills?
Move to approve the bills.
Councilman Patterson, thank you, we have a motion to approve the bills, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kelly, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve the bills. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Very good, thank you. Item number nine is public comment at this period of time, uh, at every council meeting. Item number nine is public comment. At this period of time, at every council meeting, we open it up for public comment. Anybody who would like to address the council, have a question, have a statement you'd like to make, something such as that, you can come to the podium. Don't want a dissertation, but a couple of minutes anyway. And so if there's anybody here who would like to do that, now's the time. Would anybody like to come up and address the council? I have your report, Lancer. Not much going on. Thanks for the efforts that you're doing with the school kids and all that, though. That was great. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
I have a few.
Councilwoman Steinbach?
So I have a few comments I'd like to make. Although I've been an educator for, for many, many years, I am not, public speaking is not my strength, so I writ, I wrote down some of my thoughts and organized them. And so forgive me for reading this, but you'll, you'll thank me later, so... Okay. So when I came on the council, it was at the time that Mr. Law was retiring, and during his comments, he talked about the amazing employees that we have here at the city of Torrington. At the time, I remember thinking how nice it was he acknowledged the employees and offered such praise. However, now that I've spent some time on the council, I have, but I have a better understanding of Mr. Law's comments. I have come to truly appreciate the incredible wealth of knowledge and experience and skills that we have here at the city of Torrington. I want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of our dedicated staff for your commitment to making this community a truly special place to call home. I want the employees to know that the work you do on a daily basis does not go unnoticed, and I am truly grateful for all that you do for the city of Torrington. To my colleagues on the council, I want to thank you for your support and guidance as a new member of the council. I feel very fortunate to have been able to serve with each of you in my short, during my short tenure. Mr. Mayor, thank you for taking a chance on me, and thank you for your quiet, confident, and consistent leadership. I have learned so much from your example. One of your leadership qualities that I find exceptional is your skill of truly listening to others. You listen to learn and understand rather than, rather than to respond, and I find that to be a worthy skill to emulate. I hope that I will be able to take that skill and apply it in both my professional and personal interactions. And finally, to the new council members and to Mayor-elect, Mayor-elect Doby, congratulations. I wish you all the best, and I am confident that change is both necessary and beneficial to productive growth. Best of luck and best wishes to you as new council members.
Thank you. That was kind. I appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
I would like to take this time personally to thank Mr. Adams, Mr. Kenny, and Steinbach for their service to the city, and just thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all. It's contributed quite a bit.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Any further comments? Okay, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
I would too, move.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. My last council meeting.